Nation.
Councilor may have the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. In compliance with NJSA 10-4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you. Uh, roll call.
Dr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Riker. Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Herman.
Here.
Miss, Mr. Canderozi.
Here.
Mr. Wall. Mr. Fleming. Mr. Marzo.
Here.
Mr. Herring.
Here.
Mr. Hudak.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I thought I saw Mr. Walls. Okay. Um, we're gonna have an executive session this evening, but we're gonna have it after the applications so that uh, everybody doesn't have to sit around for that. Um, so may I have a motion for a payment of voucher recording secretary for uh, this evening, December 12th, 2022, please?
Motion.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you. Um. We have some minutes um. From September 19th, 2022, the executive session. Did everybody have a chance to review those? Any changes, problems? Everybody good with them? Uh. Yes, they're out. Um. Anyone care to make a motion September 19th, 2022? Uh, roll call, please.
Eligible to vote, Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Herman.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker. Sorry, Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Herring.
Yeah.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes. Um, and the other one that was ready that was distributed to everyone were the minutes from November 21st, 2022, that was our regular meeting. Uh, any changes, comments? Questions? Everybody good with them? Anyone care to make a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
And roll call, please.
Eligible to vote, Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yeah.
Mr. Canderozi.
Yes.
Mr. Herring.
Yeah.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Engineering and planning matters. Gentlemen, do you have anything for this evening?
Happy holidays now.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, legal matters. I understand we have four resolutions that um are ready to be um reviewed by the board. Um, at this point, I'll turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Murphy.
Very good. Uh, the first resolution we have for consideration tonight is 22, uh, 2022-26. So. Resolution 2022-26, that's the resolution of the planning board. Um, granting preliminary major site plan approval with variance relief for a warehouse with office space for Herman Jackson LLC, block two, uh, 2201 lot 54. And eligible to vote on that are, uh, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, Mr. Canderozi, Mr. Fleming, and Mr. Hudak.
Okay, um. Anyone care to make a motion to approve that resolution?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Bernstein. I have. I have Bernstein here, no?
There is.
No. I know. Okay, Mr. Um. Uh, Herring. Okay.
Okay. That's fine.
Um. So we're gonna have to table that resolution.
Okay.
That's 22 dash 26, 2022-26.
26.
Correct.
Okay, next one. Do you have a list of um who is eligible for?
That's I do. It's included in the resolution.
Okay. Yeah, because the people might not be here.
So we need to vote on. It's essential.
I mean, I will go by the copy that you have.
So I have, that's a, I believe that's a different application.
Two, 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 six. I think that's one right here.
Yeah. But what I have, I have, this is what I have.
I will just go, if you have extra copy of Jones, just take your copy.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I, I don't have an actual copy, but.
Okay, well.
Take two. Okay. There is a motion.
We're no longer tabling that resolution.
Okay, and we need a second. We have a second and a roll call, please.
Uh, Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Herman.
Yeah.
Mr. Canderozi.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Recording. Uh, Mr. Hudak.
Yes. Okay, that's our first of four. That's fine.
All right. Um, okay, so the second resolution on is 2022-27. Uh, it's a resolution of the planning board, uh, granting preliminary major site plan approval with variance relief for a warehouse with office space for Yosef Rothenberg, block 102, lot 1. Um. Eligible to vote on that particular application are Dr. Campbell, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Fleming, Mr. Harry, and Mr. Hudak.
Okay.
No, and Mr. Wall.
Someone care to make a motion? And roll call, please.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Herring. Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
Next, we have resolution 2022-28. Uh, it's a resolution of the planning board, uh, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a contractor's office, showroom, garage, warehouse, and shop for GM Equities LLC, block 4, 4601 lots 4 and 5. Uh, eligible to vote on that particular application, uh, on this resolution, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Riker, Mr. Herring, Mr. Fleming, and Mr. Hudak.
Okay. Motion.
Yes.
It's five people out of twenty-four more here.
Correct, so only the four here will vote.
Mr. Wall needed the, the bearing of that.
That's correct.
Okay.
What's another question? I'm here. She didn't have a fluttery with um, Mr. Canderozi directly, and is that correct?
I'm not according to the resolution that was provided.
Yeah, he was probably an alternate that, that evening. Right, that's. So what I'm suspecting. Okay, so we have, um, this is 2228. Um, did we get a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Herring.
Yeah.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
And Mr. Hudak.
Yes. Okay, and lastly.
Lastly, we have 2022-29. It's a resolution of the planning board, uh, granting final major site plan approval for an office warehouse facility for Wright Debo Road LLC, block 401 lot 9. Uh, eligible to vote, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Canderozi, Mr. Fleming, Mr. Herring, and Mr. Hudak.
Okay, we've got more. Motion?
I'll go to a call.
Okay.
Second.
All right, and roll call, please.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Canderozi.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Herring. Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, big comparisons for 2023, uh, professionals. Has everyone received them and had a opportunity to um to review them? Um, I don't think that's anything we're going to um talk about much this evening. Uh, I just want to make sure that everybody is, uh, has them um, and is prepared to vote on them when we, uh, return after the new year during a reorg meeting. Okay. We're gonna jump right in, uh, our first application.
We have the announcement in regard to the other, the two applications.
Um, well, the first application is um being carried, so that's what I was
Okay.
getting to.
Very good.
So that first application is block 1701 lot 35, Boris Ironworks Inc. And I understand there are some um, um, technical issues with that, um, and the applicant needs to be represented by an attorney. So, um, they asked that that be rescheduled. So we were looking at the schedule and, you know, listen, we got a lot coming up. Um. And they can be ready at, um, anytime. Right now, February 6th, we have two meetings, uh, two applications, excuse me. Um. Everybody okay with that moving to February 6th? We do, we do. Uh, I, I don't think this is a very big, um. I don't think this is gonna be a big deal at all. We could probably schedule it first and be done with it and then move on. And also, there's, I understand there's um um some things going on with, uh, those schools, so we haven't heard anything about. Oh, is it really?
Yeah.
Initial testimony, okay. All right, I stand corrected. Um. Is everybody comfortable moving into February 6th, or you wanna pick the next? Um.
One, one concern is we have backdrop of quite a number of people who are waiting for the reorder being uh, there would be to be scheduled, so we don't wanna move somebody ahead.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of the line.
Right, that's true too.
That's not really fair, so, um, I think you know, our secretary ought to look at who moves first and the second order, you know, actually. Yeah, all right, then, you know, and follow the order so that it's somebody who can't drop them there in the late stages and move early.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That's a good point. So where do you wanna go with that? Okay. Okay.
I would suggest that we listen maybe for the twenty-seven. February.
Well, I think they bring up a good point that, you know, we have all these other applications that we have, um. We have on the back burner until the reorg meeting when we're going to schedule them, and they were there first.
My understanding from the secretary is that this application is actually first in line before the, the applications that are listed in the reorg.
Is that true? Ms. Mars. Yeah. Yes?
Yes. Um, I'd also add, this, um, this application is, is for a, um, home occupation, it's a pretty simple application, but you never know.
Yeah, 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 all right. So what is it, February twen-? Twenty-seven? Yeah, okay. Okay, um, so block one, uh, one seven zero one lot thirty-five Boris Iron Works. That will be rescheduled to, um, two twenty-seven, twenty-three, boy, the years. Uh, okay, um. Can someone make a motion, please? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, then we have, um. This, uh, application carried, this is, uh, block one nine four zero three lot four, uh, GM Rawtown LLC. And I guess they're, uh, looking to get that carried as well, is that?
That's, yeah, that, that's correct.
And is there any, um. Preference on dates? Or should we move that also to the twenty-seventh?
There was no preference given by the applicant for the date, and I, I would also recommend the twenty-seventh for that particular application.
Okay, um, you know, I think we missed, um, do we need to notice, uh, anything for that first one that we carried?
No, so for the first one, uh, there's no further notice, um, and they also waived time.
Wonderful. And this one?
Uh, no further notice for the third application, and they have also waived time.
Wonderful. Okay, so can I get a motion to, um, is everybody okay with moving that to the twenty-seventh? Okay, so block one nine four zero three lot four GM Grotown LLC. That's going to be rescheduled to February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. And do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the application to the twenty-seventh of February.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, that brings us back to our, um. Only application for this evening, and that is block two seven zero one lots thirty-two and thirty-three Jackson One LLC, and this is a, um. Uh, continuation of, uh, testimony was given back on November seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Um, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alferi, on behalf of the applicant. That's correct, we were here in November, we presented testimony from our engineer, our architect and our traffic engineer. There were questions and comments raised at the last meeting, we've submitted revised plans to address, uh, what we believe are all the comments. Uh, just to summarize, um. One of the things that we did is there were two access points on West Commodore, one of them, uh, required a variance because it was within a residential buffer area. We eliminated that driveway, and therefore that variance was eliminated. We provided, we've provided refuse areas which weren't reflected in the last plan. We had agreed and stipulated that we would post a restoration bond so that. If we started construction and it wasn't finished, there'll be a source of funds that the town can use to restore the property. Um, we, we've now installed a full circulation for the fire, uh, lane, emergency access. Um, we also agreed to provide, um, construct the building so it could accommodate solar on the roof. Um, and we agreed that there would be city water, that's basically a summary of what was agreed to at the last meeting, we're gonna call, um, Tony Diggan again, who was our engineer.
Before you do, I'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Professionals to.
You're right.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, Mr. Clay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Alferi summed up the, uh, uh, the matter pretty, pretty precisely. Um, the only thing I would add is I believe there was some discussion as far as the improvements to Patterson Road. Um, and I think we, and, and proven plans were provided, um, uh, to, uh, to us that detail the, um, improvements that are proposed. So some testimony from the app, and exactly what is, um, what's going on.
Okay. Mr. Peters.
The only outstanding. Issue that I believe was raised at the November seventh meeting was the twenty-four seven operations.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Alferi.
Thank you, and Mr. Diggan.
Where you wanna be here or there? Good, yeah.
Um, before you begin. Um, now, you were sworn in back in November, um, so you're still under oath. Uh, we accepted your credentials back on, uh, November eleventh, if you could just say your name, your, um. Your role in all of this, and, uh, maybe just quick, your, um, credentials.
Sure. Yeah, my name is, uh, Tony Diggan. Uh, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, my license is current and good standing, employed by Kimmy Horn. At, uh, three oh wing Carnegie Center Boulevard, suite two oh two in Princeton. And I receive land development in New Jersey for Kimmy Horn.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And Tony, would, uh, are we gonna be referring to exhibits that were submitted?
Yeah, i- if I may, I was just gonna point, uh, via laser pointer and point out the, um. The, um, ma- major changes, uh, that we had, um, amended to comply with the request. So in this area here, in the, um. Uh, this, this plan, before we get started here, this is, let's call this A-one. It's a detailed site plan rendering prepared by my firm. Uh, dated December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, is a forty-scale drawing, ostensibly the same as the site plan that was submitted, uh, with, with, um. An aerial overlaid and color, uh, colorized, uh, sections. In the southwest corner of the site, uh, previously we had discussed that, uh, there was a, uh, residential zone in this area here. Uh, we had discussed that, uh, there was a hundred-foot, uh, buffer requirement. We did set back all improvements and add increased buffering in this area here, so there are no improvements within that a hundred, uh, foot buffer. Um, we could talk even further that perhaps the hundred-foot buffer isn't required because we are not on a, uh, minor, uh, collector action on arterial, so there's some, uh. Some interpretation, the ordinance would, would say that we're not required to do that, but I say that as an aside, so we did need the hundred-foot buffer if that is a requirement. Um, again, we did remove, uh, this driveway in this area. This driveway here to the east shifted about thirty, forty feet. Um, that resulted in, um, hundred-and-fifteen total parking spaces. Uh, fourteen of which were going to be EV-ready, uh, which yields a hundred-and-twenty-nine stalls overall. Uh, which meets the parking requirements for the building itself, warehouse building of a hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-five square feet. And fifty-eight hundred square foot of office. Uh, we added, uh. Revised rather, some of the fire access, so at this point, there's complete fire access around the building. You have, uh, these are grasspaver twenty-foot by, twenty-foot wide fire accessways, uh, separated fifteen feet from the building. Um. There was a request to, uh, investigate potentially taking this fire access, putting it on the other side of the basin. Moving the basin back closer, uh, we're, I believe, willing to entertain that request, I would just note that it looks like. That distance from the edge of the roadway would be approximately a hundred and nine feet, based on rough calculation. Um, so we can work with the township on, on that, uh, configuration. Uh, we did add the, uh, trash receptacles back in this area here. Um. There's some additional, um, stormwater comments from the, uh, boards engineer, we did add floor bays. Uh, and addressed other comments in the stormwater management. Uh, we did add, um, calculations because we're in the conservation overlay. And we did update the, um, setback from the, the wetland buffer, all of which were on the bulk table and noted on your professionals' review letters. Uh, with regard to Patterson Road, uh. Patterson Road is, is improved, uh, is paved, is in good shape. Um, so right now, we have some, some minor, uh, improvements approximately, let's say, two hundred feet back. Uh, setting the stop bar back to allow, uh, better, uh, truck circulation, and those are in the, uh, offsite improvement plans. Uh, we did submit those to the county, and we had, um, some initial feedback where they're requesting additional information to deem as complete, we just received that late last week. From a signage standpoint. Uh, we did remove the request for the, um, two signs on the, uh, two wall-mounted signs. Uh, one of those signs was for the, uh, site address, we did remove that from consideration, wired that to the monument sign. So I believe that cleans up potential variance there. Um, directional signage, resubmitted, uh, directional signage, uh, computations, all directional signs are, are going to be within the ordinance, uh, allowed sizes. I think that's generally it.
Um, a couple of follow-ups, first, uh, the report, the, we did agree to address Mr. Clay's report that was issued prior to the last meeting. And I assume we could still address those technical comments as a condition of approval?
Yes.
And then Mr. Peters did issue a new letter dated, um. I don't know the date, I'm looking.
Yeah, that is dated December sixth.
Right, and, and, and the technical comments that are contained within that report, are there any issues with them, and or can we address those as a condition of approval?
I think we can address all technical comments, I would just ask if we had addressed all this, all the, um. Testimony requested in that letter, I believe I touched on most of it.
All right, and then one other follow-up, one of the board members, I believe actually the chairman, asked if we could, uh, potentially limit the trucks as they leave, uh, Patterson. To a write-out only, uh, and the applicant would agree to petition the town and the county if they were to allow it?
Yeah, so from their, our driveway, we can, we can sign it write-out only.
Right.
Um, it'd be the, the request that to prohibit left turns on the Commodore Eastbound.
And that's for tractor-trailer.
For tractor-trailers, yeah, we can petition the, the county on a resubmit for that.
As long as the board understands we have no control over that traffic movement, it'll be up to the county and the town, if they allow it, the signage can go up and it can be enforced. Um. I believe that's all the changes, so we can ask any, answer any questions, I know there's another issue you wanna raise, but we may wanna get through the questions first.
Sure.
Anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On the Patterson Road improvements, um, curbs and sidewalks, for the whole frontage? Uh, no, so we were going to pay into the, uh, improvement fund for the, for the sidewalks. All right, thank you.
I think everybody's good.
Okay, we have just one other point, there, yeah, today, we were talking about the aesthetics, you wanted Tony to describe something for the board to consider, if you want, if you're not, don't want to, that's also fine.
No, by all means.
Sure, um, so we were looking at, um, this area here at the drive, relocated driveway, there's a, um. An island in this area, uh, on the island is a transformer. Uh, previously, on the prior site plan submission, we had that transformer located back here. Um, there was a question of whether or not, you know, could we move that, that transformer back there and park this? In which case, we would end up with five additional, uh, spaces, employee parking spaces. Uh, one of which we would ask the EV ready, make ready, um, which would then yield. I believe that'd be, um. Six additional spaces. And at two hundred per on the office, we would be asking, or requesting, is, you know, if. The board is medium for that, we'd be looking for, uh, sixty-eight hundred square foot of office, I believe.
So the, the, the end result, if the board were to consider that last minute request, is to eliminate that island, add the parking spaces there. Still conform to the total parking spaces, but it will allow an additional a thousand square feet, up to a thousand square feet of office space within the building, that wouldn't change the footprint.
That's correct.
And then the transformer would be in the back of the building. That's, again, if the boards considers that, that's fine, we'll live with, um, whatever the board's decision is.
That is considered the, um. The frontage of the building where that transformer is now, I mean, isn't that against our ordinances to have a, um, um, transformer such as that in the front? Mr. Clay? Um.
I would definitely.
Uh, microphone?
Uh, I'm considering, um, that, that would be, um, restricted to be in part.
Should be. Right, that shouldn't be front and center of, um, of the building.
Uh, I don't represent his zoning, is that what you said?
But our alternate would eliminate that.
Yeah.
That's really, uh, we have an exhibit, if you wanna see what that would look like, that change, it's just.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Yes. But there, it's really employee parking, so it's minimal in terms of, um, conflict, but yes. They are, absolutely are. Tony, you wanna show that, that latest exhibit, just so you can consider it?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so this, this will be the area where the additional, uh, five spots were, and then the. Uh, as it was before, the mechanical rooms would be relocated here, and your transformer, an access point would be in this area. So this was a pump room, I think, yeah, this is, this would be the pump room and the utility room. I believe that the transformer would be located off of the side, the permit access. Uh, would be at least, uh, ten feet. Uh, I can't comment on it, I just know what P C and G requires. Then with separation. No, I said it would be slid over in this area here, the permit, unfettered access. Uh, this isn't really my plan, so I, I would defer, but I, I would assume there would be no, uh, restriction to access to the fire pump room now. I do not know.
We have.
Loads is developed yet, but.
Architects here, if you want to pursue this line, or if you. Trying not to set this off, okay?
Um. We'll bring him up, uh, in a minute. Soon as this gentleman is done with his testimony.
He's finished, otherwise, the rest is all architect, yes. One, Kyle? First, before you begin, state your name, and you, you testified at the last hearing as well.
Yes.
So state your name and what discipline you're, you're, um, testifying on.
Yeah, uh, Kyle Ferrier, F E R R I E R. Uh, testifying project architect for Arco Design Building.
Okay, you've heard the questions about this latest, um, version?
Yes, yeah, I'm afraid I don't have every answer, the, the building isn't fully designed, I do know. Um, it's common practice, best practice to put all of the utilities kind of centrally located in one part of the building. Um, I know it's a two thousand amp service, uh, we'll place it at least ten feet from the building, uh, as was previously met. Excuse me, as was previously mentioned. Um, off to the side as well, so it's not directly adjacent to the, to the fire pump room, but. Uh, we do plenty of buildings like this with both utilities right next to each other, uh, with no issues there.
You don't know the electric.
Are you comfortable with that?
I, I.
You're not.
Yeah, I.
I, I, yeah, I- Um, I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of each of those systems, I do know we commonly place them next to each other in every warehouse we build. Yes.
Is, I'm not at fault, is there somewhere else where you could adjust this, um, placement of these, um, you know, I, Mr. Fleming raises a good point, I mean, you know, water and electricity don't mix, obviously, so you want the furthest, uh, distance possible to protect, uh, our firefighters.
We, there, there are other locations within the building, if, if the board's inclined, we can, you could, if you wanted to condition approval and sign off from both the board professionals and the fire official, that's fine.
I'm okay with that. Mr. Fleming, you all right with that?
Yeah.
But also now, uh, he also brings up a point about the, um, those parking spaces that are gonna go in where the transformer is that, um, they're gonna be backing up into where the entrance is there. Do we have a, uh-
So we'll, we'll, we'll make it easy, we'll just plant that island and there'll be nothing there.
Done.
How's that?
Yep, okay. I'm good with that. Anyone else have any questions? Uh, do you have any more test-
That's all, we are traffic engineers here, if you need to hear from them, but there really been those substantial change that would result in additional traffic testimony unless the board has questions.
Okay, is he gonna be involved in the, um, getting the county to approve the write out only?
Yeah, you want to bring him up?
Sure.
Sure. Adam Gibson's his name.
Hi, good evening, Adam Gibson, uh, traffic engineer with Kimley Horn, I was previously sworn. Uh, my address is two, two, one River Street, suite nine, zero, one, three in Hoboken, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, you heard the question of, and you heard Tony's comment about we would petition the county and the town to, to limit, uh, write out the tractor trailers onto West Commodore.
Correct.
You would be involved with that process with the county?
Yes, I would be, it's part of our traffic study that we would submit to them, we would have to respond to those comments and as part of our application, I would be involved in those discussions, yes, sir.
Okay, um, you know, that, that is an important, um, how can I put it? An important piece of this project to get every, all that traffic funnelled out to five seventy one and whichever way they're going on there and not going the other way past residential areas and-
Yes, understood.
Okay.
It's, again, we just have no control over that, in the end, uh, we'll do everything we can, we'll work with, uh, Doug primarily, I guess. Um, but the county has the ultimate say.
On the surface, it seems like a pretty easy thing, right? I mean, uh, the county is concerned about safety as well, so tractor trailers pulling out to make a left.
Yeah, it would certainly create fewer conflicts at the intersection for trucks pulling out onto Commodore, correct?
Right. All right, anybody have any questions for the traffic? Go ahead.
Sorry, so I wanted to confirm with our professionals that all the potential variances have been cleaned up on this application at this point? I mean, there's no variance relief. Thank you.
Okay, at this time I'd like to open it up to, uh, public comment, if anybody cares to speak about this application, please step up to the microphone.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, okay.
So, Mr. Chair, the only lingering issue is the twenty four seven issue, um, we, there's nothing in the ordinance that prohibits it, we're gonna request that the board approve it without a limitation. Many other warehouse projects have been to, to prove that way. Um, it would put us at a competitive disadvantage if we're, if that's imposed. We've addressed every comment, we've eliminated every variance and, uh, we're just requesting that the board approve it as presented.
Um, Mr. Williams, Peters, you guys, uh, the statement of operations, did you, um, review that and, uh, are there any issues that you can see?
Typically attach, um, uh, what was submitted to my, um, engineering report. I believe it, I believe that, um, they were requesting, um, the twenty four seven, um, operations, um, from an engineering perspective, I really want to make sure.
Um, the issue's always noise. Um, they have to meet the noise ordinance, if they don't meet the noise ordinance, um, the municipality will be required to go out and issue summonses and enforce the noise ordinance requirements in the municipality. So, un- unless the applicant has any additional information with regards to their statement of operations, because while there may have been a written one, I'm not sure if we discussed it much at the last hearing, um, and their willingness to comply with the local noise ordinances. That's what we have on the books to utilize as part of this discussion and in terms of enforcement.
And we have, fir- first of all, I, we don't have a choice but to comply with the noise ordinance, um, but ob- ob- obviously we'd have to comply and, um, our statement of operate, we don't have a user yet, so it's really a function of just having the flexibility to make sure we have, we could properly tenant the building. Um, but we would comply with all noise ordinances and any other regulations that impact, uh, the residents or the community.
How is everybody with that?
Mr. Chairman?
Could we ask that they attached to every contract a copy of the noise ordinance?
We, we could certainly put a, a copy of the noise ordinance in every lease that we have, sure. Hopefully there'll be one tenant, but you're right, if there's multiple, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions? Mr. Wall?
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Marzo?
Yeah.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudek?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, have a great holiday, everyone.
Okay, you too, thank you. Okay, we are going to, um, go into, uh, an executive session, so, um, I ask that the, um, the room be cleared, um, we have to-
Just, bef- before we do that, can I, can I put it, the motion on the record?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Um, I just want to articulate a motion for executive session, so where is the planning board of the township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, N J S eight, ten, four. And whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, N J S eight, ten, four, dash, twelve, provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution. Whereas it is necessary for the planning board of the township of Jackson to discuss in a session not open to the public matters relating to, uh, the item or items authorized by N J S eight, ten, four, dash, twelve, B. That matter being a general discussion subject to the attorney client privilege. Uh, we're resolving to enter, uh, executive session, uh, for the said, the general discussion. Um, and it's anticipated that deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon a determination that public interests will no longer be served by such confidentiality.
Okay, thank you. So. So.
We just need a motion, we need a motion.
Need a motion, uh, hold on, uh, need a motion to enter executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.